Okay, it's seven o'clock.
Okay, so good evening to our community members and members of the district equity team. I, Dr. Robert Shapps, I would like to take a moment just to welcome everyone who's participated this evening in our community forum. At this time, I'd like to give a special welcome to Ms. April Francis Taylor, who is the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusivity for the Eastern Civic Bosse's. And I want to, and we'll turn over our forum this evening to our coordinators of equity issues, Mr. Leon White, who is a choral teacher at Homic. And Assistant Principal Jenny Rodriguez, and thank you for facilitating this work and the work of the District Equity Committee. Before we begin, for those who've joined us, I wanted to clarify and certainly start off so that we can really delve into and provide, allow you to provide comment and feedback on our plan. As part of our district equity plan under Priority Three, we've posted a goal that is, speaks to the equitable assignment of our elementary students as a, certainly an important goal. And as important as the community has provided some written feedback on that stated goal, to point out that the goal is really building on the work of the enrollment task force, and it's not meant to supplant the work of the Board of Education or the work of the task force in considering multiple perspectives on how we would rethink configuration of our schools. And we, the Board, I know of education, certainly in the administration, and members of the District Equity Team are committed to a formal process that involves opportunities for stakeholders to examine, provide input, certainly explore options. But it's important that this work, that as this goal defined by our committee, really speaks to the one piece of the puzzle that looks at how we organize our schools through an equity lens. And so I don't want this to, to take away from the entirety of our plan and want to assure everyone that any process about developing a new structure of assignment to schools will involve the community over months of deliberation and discussion. So with that, I say thank you and turn things over to Leon and Jenny.
Thank you, Dr. Shapps. Hello, hello again, everybody, and welcome. We are delighted to have you here tonight, join us in this, the discussion, and get, to gain your feedback on the Mamaroneck Equity and Education Strategic Plan. I'm Leon White, one of the co-chairs, and I also teach music at the Homic. On your screen, you will see right now all the members of, our current members of the District Equity Team, some of which you'll hear from tonight. And again, thank you for, for joining us tonight. I'll hand over to my other co-chair, Ms. Jenny Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Rodriguez. As was stated, I am one of the Assistant Principals. I'm at Mamaroneck High School. And also, I have been a member of the Equity Team and now co-chair with Leon. We are excited to, to now, you know, we've presented the plan and now we're excited to get your feedback on the plan. You know, as anybody who knows this work knows, equity plans are usually long-term plans, and they're usually living and breathing documents. And this one is just that. So there's nothing set in stone. This is the plan that the committee has, has worked on for several weeks. And we look forward to hearing your feedback. The best way to make sure that everybody is heard is to set some norms. So on the screen, you'll see some virtual norms. And I'm going to briefly go through them now. The first is, you know, please use the rename function and share your full name, as I believe mine appears. Please remain muted unless called on by our moderator to speak. So we are going to go over, you know, again, when it's time to speak, we will go over the raising your hand function, and then you will be called on. Use the chatroom to share any thoughts or ask questions pertaining to the equity plan. Please note, all questions will be recorded for future review, should the panel be unable to address them at the moment. So again, you know, there, there will be some questions that you all have that are going to be great questions and things that we will bring back to the committee for further conversation. Please refrain from making remarks addressed to any one person and adhere to the process of reflecting on the equity plan. So again, when you speak or when you give your comments, we would ask that you direct them to areas of the plan. And as always, be kind and courteous and ensure everybody has a chance to be heard during our discussion. Some other things to think about. As we saw some of the survey responses, rest assured that hosting this forum ensures inclusion of community, of community feedback into the plan, as I stated earlier. This plan is a support to the present curriculum, so we're not at all throwing away anything all in its entirety. The Community District Equity Team will comprise of a wide range of stakeholders, including parents and family members, students, and members of community organizations. And applications and the process of applying will be shared in the near future. This plan was developed using data from previous years. A full data presentation will be shared with the community as outlined in the strategic plan. All decisions made for the plan will be based on the new established commit, Community District Equity Team that is forming after these forums. When the term historically marginalized is mentioned, it refers to those who have experienced systemic barriers due to their identity. So for example, race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, ability, and disability.
Thanks, Jenny. So we're just gonna, I'm just gonna give you a quick snapshot of the results of the survey that some of you actually completed. So far, mostly, parents have completed the survey, and we're really appreciative, appreciative, excuse me, of that. And when it comes to the mission statement, just about thirty-three percent of you strongly agree with the mission statement. On this slide, it, we have Priority Area Three, which focuses on developing an inclusive and anti-racist curriculum. And over fifty percent of responders actually strongly agree with this Priority Areas goal. Priority Area Two is focusing on strengthening and creating opportunities and access for all our kids. And again, over fifty percent of folks who responded strongly agree with this goal. And the final priority area, Area Three, which prioritizes student and community input to dismantle the inequitable policies and reframe for equity, we have just under forty-two percent strongly agreeing with this Priority Area goal. And on this slide, it asks, in your opinion, do you believe this plan will be effective in addressing the equity issues facing the Mamaroneck School District? And just under fifty percent strongly agree that it will be effective. As Jenny mentioned, we want to hear your feedback. And, and we have set you up for success as we do as teachers. And we're gonna ask that you appreciate or show your appreciation for aspects of the plan. You may ask, ask questions, and of course, you can please make suggestions. To raise your hand, to speak, select participants on your Zoom program or software, then select more, and then you'll be able to raise your hand. And then you'll be acknowledged, and you can share your appreciation, a question, or a suggestion. As promised, you'll be hearing from some of our DET members, team members. And right now, to present Priority Area One, the goals and potentials in that priority area, our AP, Homic's AP, Rob Andrews, and our co-chair Jenny Rodriguez.
Thank you, Leon. It's a tremendous honor to present with my colleagues from across the district and across schools. So our Priority Area One is described as, we're aiming to develop inclusive and anti-racist curriculum, instruction, and assessment through all grades K to twelve. And these ideas and goals were in part adapted from the Culturally Responsive and Sustaining Education Framework, Principle Three. The goals are, one, we plan to conduct a K to twelve inclusive curriculum and assessment audit with a focus on diversity, racial literacy, equity, and social justice. Additionally, we will conduct audits of hidden curriculum, such as school spaces, courses, programs, traditions, libraries, artwork, and murals, anything really that goes beyond what's explicitly taught in the schools. Goal two, we plan to provide all staff with professional development on culturally responsive pedagogy and teaching, and include inclusive practices that affirm and support the diverse identities and experiences of all of our students. Goal three, we will empower our students, particularly Black, Indigenous, people of color, or BIPOC students, to be co-creators of our school curriculum. We will center their voices and experiences through focus groups, surveys, and interviews. We will provide continuous space and time for our students to share their classroom experiences and provide feedback, input, and suggestions for a more representative, relevant, and just curriculum. Goal four, we will create K to twelve content leadership teams that will research, develop, and enact anti-racist and social justice curriculum. We will create opportunities for teachers to plan within and across curriculum areas to support this work in each and every classroom across the district. Goal five, we will identify and support our educators who are implementing strong culturally responsive and equity strategies within their classrooms. And we will create ways to lift them up and for them to serve as teacher leaders.
So as we talked about, as we talked about these goals, these are just some potential outcomes that we discussed in the committee. And I will just read them. In K to five classes, will, will include civic, social justice, and culturally responsive social studies curricular material, including African, Asian, Latin American history, the American slavery system and its impact on economics, power, and privilege. Each year, there will be time allotted for professional development on culturally responsive and sustaining education framework and includes, and inclusive classroom strategies. Teacher participation in instructional rounds will, with a focus on culturally responsive pedagogy, best practices within the Mamaroneck School District. Student leaders trained on advocacy methods and become members of the District Equity Team. The middle school will partner with Facing History in Ourselves at an interdisciplinary unit in grades seven and eight. The high school will continue to teach the interdisciplinary grade nine unit from Facing History in Ourselves on civil rights movement, using it as a foundation for continued anti-racist and, and social justice throughout the year. Grades nine through twelve, student social science electives will include Africana Studies and/or Literature and Latin American Studies and/or Literature. And lastly, curriculum resources on culturally responsive pedagogy in math and science content areas for elementary, middle school, and high school educators.
Thank you, Rob and Jenny. At this time, we can take any questions from our attendees. Okay, so we'll move on.
We have John Shepherd, who is going to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd?
Hi, how are you? I was having difficulty finding the unmute button. My question is, at this time, does the committee intend to incorporate components of the sixteen nineteen project in the curriculum? And if so, what measures do we currently have in place to address some of the inaccuracies that are depicted within that framework?
So I'll speak to that. We have not looked at any specific framework as of yet. That would be some next steps in the process.
Okay, next, we have Amy Novo. Amy?
Can you hear me, Karen?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Good evening. So can you give us an example of what a culturally responsive curriculum? Or I, I don't have the slide in front of me, but in math and science in elementary schools, what does this really mean?
So we are in the process, that's part of the work. We are going to have teachers become a part of a committee where they can, where we can explore it different ways, different ways where different districts have done it. But we know, we didn't want to just leave everything in just the humanity side.
And Amy, just, I can take that just even from the Homic's perspective. I supervise the Science Department, and there are multiple ways to look at some of our curricula, whether it's human, you know, human and cultural development, you know, the celestial sciences, astronomy, you know, I'm frequently talking with teachers. So it's exciting to think that we have a rich curriculum that we can consider through this lens.
Do you have another hand? Sean Yannick?
Yes, hi. Good evening, and thank you for hosting this. I have a question on, I was going through the presentation earlier, and there's a phrase called equitable outcomes is one of the goals that you hope to accomplish. What does that even mean? And how do we know that there isn't some form of arbitrary, you know, forced, literally forced outcomes, well-intentioned, but not quite what you're trying to accomplish? Because there's a lot of talk and a lot of literature on the soft bigotry of low expectations. I just want to make sure that, all of that is well thought out.
Absolutely. And again, you know, this is stuff that, that we're continuing to, to develop. But we are using the data, the school's data from past years, and we'll continue to use the data to talk about how all of, all of our students are.
Next, we have Athena Makish. Athena?
Hi, guys. Thanks so much for this, putting this together. I know a ton of work went into it, and I don't want to take away any of that work with, with a couple of the points I wanted to point out. So I think the plan doesn't, you know, within the curriculum points out the need for anti-racist material that is fed throughout the curriculum. I was curious, in an equity plan, why we don't reference LGBTQI issues? I didn't know if this plan was just specifically to address the anti-racist needs in our community. And if so, perhaps it should state that. But I was looking for an understanding of why we're not addressing equity in general. As a gay family, I don't, I don't, I don't feel at all different in our community. But I do think there is a lack of appropriate materials spread throughout the curriculum, especially, for example, in elementary schools where books are pretty heteronormative. So I'll leave it at that, and I just wanted to point that part out.
Thank you so much. And our first, one of our first slides added that, but we'll definitely make, make notice of that, there were, make note of that. A few other folks made similar comments, so thank you for that. Equity overall for our district.
Point well taken, Athena. Thank you. We have another question from Chris Gerosa. Chris?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Thank you so much for doing this. I do think that this is very important work and necessary. I was just wondering, on the last slide of the survey, there was the pie chart with the question that says, in your opinion, do you believe this plan will be effective in addressing the issues facing the school district? And it actually is, it's, it's only a sixteen percent yes. The rest are no and maybe, twenty-three percent no and forty-eight percent maybe. And I think this is my concern. I think these are all really great objectives. But it just seems like, I mean, it's, it's a very long document with a lot of plans that a lot of people seem to agree with the ideas, but not so much with the efficacy. And I think that's really the point of doing something like this. And so what are your thoughts on that?
I think we need to go back and, and, you know, our, the purpose, we only had the survey for a couple of days. I think one of the works for the Equity Team, one of the, the tasks is to unpack the survey, and we actually will have more conversation. So right now, I don't think any of us are prepared to make any definite statements about the, the results or specific areas of the results. I think, you know, it'll be something that we will need to unpack further.
But do you think that that means that we need to look at some of the goals and plans to see if those need to be revised before we start implementing?
Well, I think we're gonna do that in general. That's the purpose of this forum. It's to get the feedback. We're not gonna implement, you know, anything blindly. And actually, we will have the feedback. We're gonna talk about it a little bit later in the, in the meeting, but we will hopefully by then have the feed, really soon, we'll have the feedback from other members that decide to, to join this work as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, and we have Diana Lovett. She's gonna speak now. Diana?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Um, so after reviewing the equity plan, a question that comes to mind is, available data shows that the district lacks clear diversity in the central administration and across all positions. And in spite of this, the DEP lacks specific goals on how to address teacher and administrative diversity. When and how will this be addressed?
How will, you mean, when will, explain a question again? When will you, we see a plan of how to address that?
Yeah, I just, you know, I reviewed the equity plan, and there was no measurable targets related to teacher or administrative diversity.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would hold off on answering that question. We're currently on priority, priority area number one, which is curriculum. But in other areas of the plan, we also address some of those issues. But I just want to stick to priority area number one right now.
Okay, so you'll be answering that question later?
Yeah, it'll be, I think it's in priority area number three. Again, we're not sitting here, you know, we started by saying this. We, we don't profess to have all of the answers, and, and we're looking for input. But we want to at least let the community know that these are topics that have come up amongst, you know, the community members that we have spoken to and amongst those of us that were on the team, on the Equity Team, working on the plan.
And I'd also like to add that these questions are being recorded, and we, we value your feedback. So even if we don't get to answering your question tonight, your question will be considered as we move forward with the plan or, or how it, how it may affect the plan. Thanks for those of you who were able to get your questions in. If you were not, you can actually type your question in, into the chat, and we will record your question and hopefully provide an answer at a later time. Due to time constraints, we will have to move on to Priority Area Two and hear from Claire Reinhardt, Kim Omoloju, excuse me, and Judy Ravina.
Hi, good evening. It's great to see so many participants tonight attending. Thank you for being here. This, like people mentioned, a lot of work went into this plan, and we're really excited to share it with all of you and extremely excited to get your feedback and work collectively as a, as a community to, you know, to continue this work. So I collaborated, collaborated with my colleagues to work on Priority Number Two, strengthening and creating opportunities, access, and educational quality for all students in our diverse community. So the goals in this priority, priority area are as follows. We are going to collect and review various forms of data, for example, academic disciplinary attendance, high-level courses, surveys, and analyze this data for inequities and acknowledge areas that bias has impacted student growth and opportunity through a district report. We are going to support advisory programs for all students K-12 to promote social, emotional learning and anti-racist mindsets and foster welcoming and affirming school, affirming school environment. We're going to create an academic support system and equitable selection process to increase diversity in student enrollment into rigorous courses for college and career readiness. We're going to develop a K-12 restorative practice and PBIS system to create, to build a collective school-community environment. And lastly, we're going to incorporate a K-12 multi-tiered student support system to ensure equity for student academic success.
And some of our potential outcomes are using the data report presentation at the January and March Community District Equity Team meetings for feedback and development of a plan to address inequities that we find to promote alternative achievement metrics for students with varied abilities that also support academics. An annual social-emotional workshops, planning annual social-emotional workshops for students and families K through twelve, scheduled age appropriately, like how to be an upstander, how to be inclusive, what are the isms? How do we combat them? LGBTQ plus rights awareness, sexual harassment awareness, and so on. To infuse digital citizenship standards within the sixth-grade library skills course to encourage positive and inclusive online behaviors. To continue support of the Community Counseling Center Educational Programming at the Homic and MHS. To continue to work with cultural and community centers to identify needs and provide services to families by offering classes focused on supporting students through hybrid and remote learning, computer literacy, or English language acquisition in person or virtually. And development of an organized district policy for MTSS behavior and academic support for all K five, K to five buildings and the Homic's with a core K to- for all K five, K to five buildings and the HOMICS with a core K to eight leadership team. Also restorative justice training for building leaders, faculty, staff, student leaders, and pilot program implementation, and creation of a student equity task force to hold courageous conversations.
Thank you, Claire and Kim. We'll now take your questions, your appreciations, or your suggestions.
Hi, Athena. You're all set.
Hi, guys. So many of these are such great plans, and I'm, I'm excited to see them on there and, and to be implemented. There's two places that I'd love to see us consider. One is, we can't analyze data that we don't have, and I think many of these points miss the ability to capture bullying throughout the school system from K through 12. I don't think we document episodes on the playground well enough. I don't think we document episodes in the lunchroom or in the hallways. And I think that we've got to really focus on making sure we have the correct data to be analyzed before we start analyzing it. And then my second point, once we have the right data, I'd love to see that be, I know we had a, a sharing at certain meetings, but I'd like to see that become very transparent data that gets shared out regularly with the community.
Thank you, Athena. Oscar Fernandez?
Hi. Yeah, my question, it's sort of piggybacks on that last question, is when it comes to gap achievement as well, like, yeah, setting a baseline and understanding how these, these plans and these goals are helping, because I think that's, you know, underlining, and I think you've highlighted it through the plan, is that a lot of these inequities lead to a large gap in achievement for many of these groups within the community. So I'm just wondering how, A, how do we baseline that? Because I know you talked about alternative achievement metrics, which sounds great, actually. But I also just wonder, like, even understanding and baselining where we are today, and then being able to understand how some of these plans are directly impacting, improving that, and lessening the gap. And then the second part of my question, which is a little more logistically, is just for the students who want to participate, how, what's the process gonna be for them to be able to participate in the equity committees?
I'm muted. We're gonna be sending out to the community application forms for anybody that's interested in being part of the equity team for students and family, community members.
Great, thank you. And just on that, that first part, too.
To address it, I think I understand your, your data question. Basically, we have some existing data sets that we've been looking at, you know, for some time now, even before this work started, and we're gonna continue to build data sets around a lot of these areas. And then from there, that, you know, that will be the baseline. And then, like any good inquiry process, we, we build our data sets that scratch the surface, and then, you know, we dig deeper into the parts that, you know, we're really interested in and that we feel like we could develop and work on, and then, and then measure, you know, create metrics, and then measure our progress as we, you know, continue to implement the plan.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Chris Gerosa again. Chris?
Hi, thank you. I have a question about number three. It says, "Create an academic support system and equitable selection process to increase diversity in enrollment into rigorated courses like accelerated classes and APs." I do think that we need to be starting earlier, like in elementary school, kind of checking in with students to see how well they're learning, like not waiting until high school to see if they're able to succeed in some of these accelerated classes. And so I do agree with the whole academic support system. Make sure everyone is, you know, receiving whatever supports they need, so they all have equal opportunity to be able to achieve as best they can to meet the standards for AP. And I'm just hoping that equitable selection process doesn't mean quotas, but still will maintain the standards to get into the APs, because it's not really fair to any student to just kind of use quotas to get people in, because it's, it's tough, and you want them to succeed. So you want them to meet the standards. And I think it's more important to make sure they're able to try to meet the standards before they get to high school than to suddenly say, "Well, you know, we'll just give you a shot because we have quotas to meet."
Thank you. Yes, we're actually absolutely keeping that in mind, and that's part of our goal, is to start at the elementary level, looking at our RTI data, looking at how can we better support students to ensure that they have the support needed to succeed in all these academic and rigorous courses.
So what, what is meant by equitable selection process?
Well, it's ensuring that there's fair representation within the AP classes of students from diverse backgrounds. And like you're saying, once they're in those classes as a district, are we providing the supports those students need to ensure that they'll have success and are able to meet the rigorous standards?
So you're.
I think if I add, I think I would just add, yes, it's exactly what you spoke about, right? So making sure that things are caught on early enough, right? So that students are able to even have that as an option to be successful. So again, you know, we, we are, is still in the process of flushing it out K through 12. In the high school, we do have some supports for students, but as you mentioned, we want to make sure it's a even greater support, and that it's K to 12, so that they can get there.
Right. It does, though, sound like you're saying there needs to be a certain percentage representation. And I think it's important that, you know, they're supported in trying to meet the standards, but whoever doesn't meet the standards, no matter who they are, that's not gonna be an appropriate course for them. They're not gonna succeed in that course.
I think the goal, Chris, is to, to start, what Judy was saying, start at the elementary schools and make sure that we build a system that supports kids and who might be struggling, and, and try to get everyone to the best place possible to be academically ready to enroll in an AP course.
Right. That's exactly what I was saying, and I agree, but not everyone, no matter what we do, not every, that's a small percentage of kids that will be able to succeed in an AP class.
Right. Thank you. We, we understand where you're, where you're, we understand your.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and lastly, we have Amy Knofel again. Amy?
Sorry, Karen. I just, I think Jenny knows where I would be going with my question. So Jenny, just as we speak about our kids, again, looking at APs and where students are with disabilities or with differences, it is not just a one person, or one color, or even national origin. I'm not American-born, so I don't understand the system. As an American-born parent, it is a very complex, beyond race question, and it's important that we remember that we are a very diverse community with parents from many, many backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're all set now. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Karen. And with that, we'll change gears and go into priority area three. We'll hear from Lauren Sharstein.
All right. I'm sorry.
And Ms. Marsha Jenwright.
Nice to be here with all of you tonight. I'm gonna be presenting priority area number three, which is prioritizing student and community input to dismantle inequitable policies and reframing for equity. And there are six goals underneath that priority area, and the first is to partner and engage community organizations in the work of the district equity team. These include the Community Resource Center, Larchmont Mamaroneck Radar, faith organizations, alumni, community advocates, and police departments. And then we're also going to work in collaboration with the Board Policy Committee, community members of the, community members and the district equity team to review and redefine policies based on anti-racist practices and equitable outcomes. And so examples include looking at the Student Code of Conduct, transportation policy, professional code of conduct, school safety code, attendance policy, job postings and recruitment of staff, and the hiring interview process and procedure, new staff mentoring, new teacher orientation, and professional programs. The third one is, we're going to establish a policy that assigns K to five students to elementary, elementary schools based on an equitable and inclusionary model that is representative of the community's diversity, not designated by geographical locations or neighborhoods. Fourth is to create district regulations that ensure all stakeholder groups are equally represented in district communications, publications, and modalities. That includes virtually and in person. We also plan to honor the diversity of our school community by providing and supporting programs, experiences, and opportunities that are reflective of all students and families. And last, we are going to create safe and braving spaces by partnering with and/or creating affinity organizations for Black, Indigenous, people of color staff and students. And that includes WASBE, 100 Hispanic Women of Westchester, NACID My Brothers Keeper Program, and others.
So I'll be walking through some of the sample potential outcomes for priority area three. And part of the goal in this priority area is to really collaborate with the community and all constituents involved, and have inclusive voices in the process of decision-making, and while we're also looking at policies, because policies, in fact, you know, lead to change. And so quarterly meetings will be held with the district community and equity team members to review and input and evaluate the decision-making process. We're going to partner with various educator affinity organizations, as was mentioned, which really represents a broad area of our staff and also our community members to elicit feedback in terms of recruitment and retention. There was a, I think someone mentioned in one of the comments about the clear lack of diversity in the upper administration. So I think one of the potential outcomes would be exactly in this area with partnering with other agencies that may have access to databases that would provide us with people who are eligible to assign themselves to our positions within the district that would be more representative of our diverse community. A redesigned district teacher mentoring program that includes clearly defined professional development components and culturally responsive pedagogy and an inclusive curriculum, and include updated versions of all district policies with an equity lens. We will hope to have decreased incidents involving antisemitic-related racial bullying against Black people, Black Indigenous people of color. And I think to someone's point, to include the perspectives of the community with regards to bullying could also be one of the potential outcomes.
We also wanted to have a creation of a diverse and inclusive elementary program that bridges all four elementary schools, a student-led annual community forum that brings our diverse community together to discuss issues and topics related to equity and anti-racist practices. We also wanted the continuation of district book studies on social justice and inclusive curriculum in partnership with Facing History in Ourselves, a recognition and celebration of national cultural months through engaging activities and events K through 12. Example, the Hispanic Heritage Indigenous People Month, Black History Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Month, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Holocaust Remembrance Day, 9/11, and the like. And we also wanted the continuation of cultural pluralism events, such as the PTA-sponsored HOMICS World Cuisine Event, the MAS International Fair, and the MHS HOMICS MLK Day Celebration.
Thank you so much. We would now field your questions, your appreciation, or your suggestions.
Okay.
Do we have any hands raised?
I'm sorry, yes, we have a few coming in now. Jeanne Van Valen? Jeanne, go ahead. Jeanne Van, Van Valen?
Hello, yes, this is Jeanne Van Valen. First of all, I want to say that this looks or sounds like a very thorough, very well-thought-out plan, and I know there's lots of work to be done. I am questioning the, what, what is the plan? Or what are your thoughts on the K-five change? It's number, uh, number three, I believe, equitable model, not neighborhood assignments, K-five students to elementary schools based on equitable and inclusionary models. How would this be determined? And what are the thoughts that people are talking about in relation to that?
So if I can add, Jeanne, thank you for the question. I, I, this is Dr. Shapps. At the beginning of our presentation, I mentioned that the, that particular goal or outcome is really linked to the district's enrollment task force recommendation to have an inclusive process that looks at reconfiguration of our schools through multiple lenses. And so the equity team has put forward a goal that is a part of this overall process that will be led by the board, the administration, to consider the recommendation of how reconfiguring our elementary schools may enhance the experience of our students. And we're looking at this goal in this work through equity lens. There'll be other members of the community that will be brought in together to look at it from multiple lenses. So it's really reflective of the recommendation of the enrollment task force, their report, and the recommendation to move this work forward with an inclusive process that allows for input and participation from the community.
In response to that, I'm just wondering, won't we be doing all the same wonderful equitable and inclusionary projects and lessons in the curriculums at all the elementary schools in our community? Wouldn't they all be getting the same instruction and availability of instruction? And what, how will you determine what's equitable and what isn't?
I, I think, I would say this, how we kind of form the framework for what we view as equitable outcomes relative to the experiences is on many different ways, looking at the experiences, the resources across the system in our various schools, looking at staffing, looking at the, the, the interaction between students and how students are organized within our schools and across our schools. And that's very different ways in terms of how we define equitable outcomes. So I, I, I think this has come up in, in the written survey comments about what does this all mean? And I think we certainly look for the opportunity to have a lengthier conversation with the Board of Education and the community about how we would contribute to the broader question or the recommendation by the task force using, again, an equity lens. And there's more to talk about.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joan Valero. Joan?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So I'm concerned about giving, about the district giving too much credence to the Enrollment Task Force findings. I mean, this was a group that was created two years ago, arising out of the Flex Zones proposal, and I don't want to take anything away from their hard work, hard work, because I know they studied this issue for, I think- because I know they studied this issue for, I think, a full year. But it was not necessarily representative of the entire community because, you know, MU FSD ran the application process and selected the participants. So, you know, I just, I'm concerned about relying too much on the task force recommendations, which I don't think were representative, and then potentially relying too much on the demographers findings from earlier this week, which I found were problematic because they relied on the 2010 census, which, you know, strikes me as incredibly out of date.
I think I'll just jump into that. I think that, you know, in general, just to reiterate, we, we're looking at, you know, as we look at equity plans of other places, things that work, we're just exploring all the options. We're actually really looking at it through the equity lens. And we'll continue to, to really look through and see what would that mean as a possibility. You know, just going to school with a variety of people makes an impact. It just does. When we talk about how we teach our young people about equity. But again, this is just one piece in, you know, several steps that we are hoping to look further into and, you know, align best what works best with our community.
Thank you, Joan. Okay, next we have Jason Rusin. Jason?
Hi, I just want to say I appreciate that the district is looking into the possibility of redrawing the elementary district lines. It does seem that our current elementary system may unite our neighborhoods, but may serve only to divide us as a larger district community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, next we have James Edgar. James?
Hi there. Thank you for all the hard work and research and presenting tonight. As it relates to redistricting, at least in terms of the proposal, is the idea that children of different backgrounds would be added to certain schools, in which case it could lead to further, you know, growth of the existing school population. Are you talking about an even exchange? So in other words, kids that are already zoned for a school based in their neighborhood would then have to be swapped out and go to, to, to those children's respective schools?
I can just say that there has been no kind of given relative to this particular goal. I think the beginning point is to really present data and look at how the system is organized through the equity lens. As I said, just in response to earlier questions that have been surveyed, it is the Board of Education that is going to kind of lead the way around a process for thinking about restructuring our schools in the future and the multiple perspectives of how we would consider that based on the work that was accomplished through the enrollment task force. So I, it's, it's really, I appreciate that, that question and what it would mean in detail. But at this point, the, the interest from the equity committee is to really emphasize and have a seat at the table around this idea of equitable outcomes around the organization of our schools.
Yeah, and I, I would just add that, and I'm sure you have this in heart and in mind, but there are farther reaching implications for all of those involved that already have their communities around their schools. So I'm sure a lot of parents will, you know, express the same concerns.
Thank you, James. Okay, and last, last question in this category, Christina Colado. Christina?
Hi, I don't know if you addressed this specifically, but I was curious to know with the situation that is going on right now with the pandemic, how do you intend to address inequity in terms of, obviously, some, some people are not able to do pods or after school activities at this moment? How are you going to address the achievement gap for those who do not have access to those particular resources? Hello?
That is, that's a good question. And, and, you know, one thing that we have have kept in the back of our minds as a D E T members is that, one, well, first you mentioned the pandemic. We met, I want to say in December of last year, and we had planned to meet again. I'm sorry, we met in February and we had planned to meet in March, and then the pandemic hit. So we had to halt our plans and we got together back again in, in the summer. So a lot of the feedback that we were getting tonight is so valuable. The fact that you mention such an important aspect of our students' learning and their, their life in general is, is, is it gives us pause and we will take this into consideration when we, I'll go back to the drawing board just to see how we can actually make this a plan for every child. That's our goal. That's our plan and that's, that's our mission. I hope I kind of answered your question.
Yes, you did. Because as a person of color, a lot of times, race and class are almost, I don't want to say inextricable, inextricable, but the barriers that we might have to extracurriculars, especially during this time, could even be more amassed. And we want to make sure that as people of color, that we're able to supplement their learning, not only with the materials that you give at school, but we also want to make sure that they keep learning aside. Another thing I wanted to ask is, in terms of the equity team, how will they, for example, let's say your child is a person of color and is able to go to those other schools? How will it be addressed that that child is protected in the sense where they're not, they're not receiving discrimination for being selected to those schools who are, that are historically not as diverse?
So I think the, the code of conduct that will be revised will address these issues. In priority area three, we have touched on ensuring that kids are not bullied based on their religion, their race or ethnicity, whether they're LGBTQ plus. So the code of conduct will directly address some of these issues that you're actually sharing right now.
So I'm gonna just jump in now and you know, with the last statement, I think that all of the work that we're doing with this equity committee and this equity team is so that, you know, we have, if, if there were to be another pandemic, which we don't want, but that hopefully, you know, we, we are addressing things so that we don't have some of the same issues coming back. So that is our goal, and it's a lofty goal, and it's a goal that, you know, is happening nationwide, not just in Mamaroneck. So with that said, I want to thank everybody for your really thoughtful questions. I'm sitting here with tons of papers and I know my colleagues are taking notes. And we are just very grateful for, for A, the appreciation for the work. I think you all got a sense of how much work it is, how passionate we are about the work. And you know, even the questions that we were not able to answer right now, it's important because I think it's, you know, it gives us as a committee more to talk about and to think about. Just a couple of announcements, we will have, I think Judy Ravina spoke to this, we will have application for for parents' involvement as well as for students. And again, you know, we are an ever evolving team. So we're working on these things as we're presenting them to you because we recognize that the time is now. And we were hoping to have an update for you on that process in November. And then we are, you know, I did write down, a few people talked about wanting to talk more about the survey. And again, those are updates that we will have for you. Our next, our equity team is scheduled to meet either, I believe it was, it's either mid-November and December. Our timeline has obviously been transformed a little bit because, you know, our start date for back to school was a little bit later and we're all juggling this brand new world. But again, we thank you. We thank you for taking out the time to read through the plan, to ask for your thoughtful, yeah, to ask your thoughtful questions and for joining us this evening. And with that, if anybody else, I don't know if Leon has anything else to add, my co-chair. But with that, thank you again and have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.